I'd like to call this November 6th meeting of the Hampton City School Board to order. It is with a heavy heart that I share some sad Hampton City Schools news with the Division, and that is the loss of two of our students in the last month. Phoebus High School student Antonio Brooks and Dustin Fullford, who attended Andrews and was enrolled at Hampton High School, if you'll join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. At this time, it is time for our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. So I'm going to turn things over to our student liaison, Ms. Ray Bolton, for some introductions.
Our invocation this evening will be given by Brianna Forte, a fifth grader at Bryan Elementary School.
Good evening, Dr. Shiflett, Chairman Mugler, and School Board members. I'd like to begin by reading the Pledge of Allegiance. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you. You now be seated. I'd like to read a poem. It's called "You Can Be Whatever You Want to Be" by Donna Levine. "There is an inside of you, all of the potential to be whatever you want to be, all the energy to do whatever you want to do. Imagine yourself as you would like to be, doing what you want to do. And each day, take one step towards your dream. And though it may be difficult to continue, hold on to your dream. One morning, you will wake up to find that you are the person you dreamed of, simply because you have the courage to believe in your potential and hold on to your dream." And that was the end of the poem.
Well, thank you for sharing your poem with us this evening. We want to take a few minutes to get to know you a little bit better. So I know you're a fifth grader at Bryan Elementary. What's your favorite subject?
Social Studies.
And what about social studies interest you?
You get to learn about the past.
And is there a favorite event that you've learned about that you really, really like?
The Revolutionary War.
Oh, wow. Well, that's a very interesting point in time. And since you're getting ready for middle school next year, are you excited about going to a new school?
Mm-hmm.
Do you know what school you'll be going to next year?
No.
Well, we do wish you the best, and we know you brought some family with you. Would you like to introduce them?
My dad, my sister, my ma, and my brother, my principal, Assistant Principal, Ms. Nels, my teacher, Ms. Barclay, my last year teacher, Ms. Williams, and my principal, Mr. Stu...
Well, we thank you for coming out this evening and sharing with us, and we're so happy to see all of your support system come out and share with you as well.
Thanks.
Thank you so much, Brianna. That was a beautiful poem, and you look just like a sugar plum fairy that popped out of a box.
I thought she was a princess.
Yes, you just look beautiful. Thank you for bringing your family with you tonight and all the folks from your school. We appreciate you all being here tonight. We'll move on to the musical performance tonight. We don't get this treat very often, so I'm very much looking forward to the next group of students that are going to come up and join us. This is a performance of the Sister Cities Anyang Vocal Quartet, and they are students from Hampton High School, and they are led by Mr. Dean Shin. I don't have the names of each of these students, so Mr. Shin, would you share with us?
Please introduce yourselves.
I'm Nakari Parries.
Nakari is a senior at Hampton High School in the IB program.
I'm Ray Brown.
Who's also a senior at Hampton High School in the IB program.
I'm Larry Walker.
Larry Walker, athlete.
Rebecca Mullis.
AP classes, all seniors. We had the privilege of visiting Anyang for the 40th anniversary of their Sister Cities status, and we're just very excited to share with you, and listen carefully to the words of this first piece. Did you catch all of those words? This song, "Ari-Rang," is, of course, in South Korea. It is Korean, and Rebecca is going to share a little bit about that song with you this evening, and the meaning that this song has in Anyang and the city, the country in South Korea.
The song "Ari-Rang" is a traditional Korean folk song, and it could be considered the second national song of Korea. The translation, or rough translation, for the song "Ari-Rang" into English is, "Ari-Rang, Ari-Rang, A-R-I-O, crossing over Ari-Rang Pass. Dear who has abandoned me here, shall not cross ten feet before his feet hurt."
Nakari and Rebecca have a duet that they did not have the opportunity to sing in Anyang in front of almost eight thousand people, I think we said.
Each day I live, I want to be, a day to give the best of me. I'm only one, but not alone. My finest day is yet unknown. I broke my heart for every game, to taste the sweet. I faced the pain. I rise and fall, yet through it all, this much remains. I want one moment in time, when I'm more than I thought I could be. When all of my dreams are a heartbeat away, and the answers are all up to me. Give me one moment in time, when I'm racing with destiny. Then, in that one moment of time, I will feel eternity. I've lived to be the very best. I want it all, no time for less. I've laid the plans, now lay the chance, here in my hands. I want one moment in time, when I'm more than I thought I could be. When all of my dreams are a heartbeat away, and the answers are all up to me. Give me one moment in time, when I'm racing with destiny. Then, in that one moment of time, I will feel eternity. You're a winner for a lifetime. If you'll seize that one moment in time, make it shine. Give me one moment in time, when I'm more than I thought I could be. When all of my dreams are a heartbeat away, and the answers are all up to me. Give me one moment in time, when I'm racing with destiny. Then, in that one moment of time, I will be, I will be, I will be free, free. I will be free. I am but a small voice, I am but a small dream. The fragrance of a flower in the unpolluted air. I am but a small voice, I am but a small dream. To smile upon the sun, be free to dance and sing, be free to sing my songs everywhere. Come, young citizens of the world, we are one, we are one. Come, young citizens of the world, we are one, we are one. We have one hope, we have one dream, and with one voice we sing. Be prosperity and love for all mankind. Be prosperity and love for all mankind. I am but a small voice, I am but a small dream. To smile upon the sun, be free to dance and sing, be free to sing my songs to everyone. Come, young citizens of the world, we are one, we are one. Come, young citizens of the world, we are one, we are one. We have one hope, we have one dream, and with one voice we sing. Be...
Give us peace.
Prosperity.
Prosperity and love for all mankind.
Be...
Give us peace.
Prosperity.
Prosperity and love for all mankind.
Thank you so much. We are, that is just a proud representation of Hampton City Schools. So pleased we got to hear some of your selections tonight. I think music is a universal language. Thank you so much for sharing your songs with us tonight. Would any of you like to speak to us real quickly about your experience? Did you have a good time?
So basically, during our trip, we stayed in this wonderful hotel. We got to eat all Korean foods, go to Korean festivals, and visit the parks and other places that they have, including the City Hall. And also, when we were performing, we got such a great welcome. Everybody enjoyed our singing. They congratulated us afterwards, and then we even went to their amusement park, which is called Lotte World, and it's basically a miniature Disney World mixed in with bush gardens, basically. And basically, we just enjoyed ourselves. It was a wonderful experience, and it was great being there.
Oh, terrific. Well, we're glad that you could come and join us tonight and share a little bit.
And also, we're glad as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Rebecca wants to share one thing with us.
Great, okay.
During our trip to Anyang, South Korea, we were able to go to the Shin Song All Men's High School, and it was a wonderful experience, because not only did all the students respectfully bow to us and shake our hands, but they included us. We were allowed to sing for them, and they even performed for us. And I just want to say it was such a wonderful experience to meet other students our age that had such a level of respect for us, and that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. The gentlemen, any of the gentlemen want to share anything with us? Are you, the ladies, you going to let the ladies speak for you?
I don't think so.
Not from the sound of their voices. I don't think they're shy. We also have with us tonight Vivian Greasy, who's the Director of Fine Arts for Hampton City Schools. And also, Mr. Kelly Deep is with us. And their principal is here, Dr. Grove. And our Assistant Principal, Jessica Ellison, is also here. Hampton High School is well represented tonight. We move now to recognitions, and I'm going to turn things over to our Marketing and Public Relations Director, Ms. Diana Galata, and she will be assisted tonight by School Board Member Jennifer Phillips.
Good evening. What a hard act to follow. It is my privilege to recognize our Dove Award winner this evening. The Dove Award stands for Dedication of Valuable Employees, and it's given to an employee who regularly provides exceptional customer service to our students, staff, and patrons. Our winner tonight is Halima Vandever. If she's here, she can come forward. Although she is now the Family Engagement Specialist at Bryan Elementary, she was nominated last year when she worked at Smith Elementary. Her nominator said that she has planned, coordinated, and implemented several events at the school, including the Backpack Program, USDA Food Bank, Mobile Dentist, Muffins with Moms, Donuts with Dads, Math and Reading Night, and several family literacy events, just to name a few. She's encouraged others to believe in themselves, and she's provided an environment of safety and trust for the parents and the children. During the holidays, Mrs. Vandever was able to do her magic and complete holiday meals, which would sustain our lower-income families throughout the holiday break. Congratulations to you, Ms. Phillips. We'd like to recognize you.
Ms. Vandever, is that right?
Vandever.
Vandever. On behalf of the School Board and Hampton City Schools, I would like to present you with this certificate for Outstanding Customer Service in Hampton City Schools, and I'd like to thank you personally. You are obviously a wonderful woman and very well thought of by the people at your school. I heard a lot about you. So thank you so much for everything you do for our kids. Now, do you have anybody here with you that you'd like to recognize from your...
The two ladies who raised me, a part of my village, my mother, Shirley Ward, my aunt, Evelyn Campbell, the young lady who always sings my praises, and I never will be able to totally live up to what she says, but Smith parent, Libby Leach, Mrs. Libby Leach, Elizabeth Leach. And I'm truly grateful to have members from the Smith family, as well as Family Engagement Specialist, and my shero, Ms. Shonda Epps, they're also here and supporting me.
Thank you.
I'm also pleased to recognize Eleanor Kimble, school nurse at Armstrong School for the Arts. Ms. Kimble received the Virginia PTA Outstanding School Nurse Award. This award is based on how the nurse makes a significant difference in the lives of students at the school. Kimble was judged against other elementary school nurses across the entire state and was selected based on the entry form from her school's PTA. Nurse Kimble's entry included dozens of letters from students, staff, and parents. The PTA praised her for not only taking care of the children while they are not feeling well, but also teaching them about hygiene, diabetes, asthma, and allergies. This quote from her nomination letter says it all. "Her day is never just a nine-to-five job. She is always looking at ways to continue advocating for our children." Ms. Kimble received her award this summer at the PTA State Conference. Ms. Phillips will now present you with the certificate.
I have to say something, because I've known this woman. She's been taking care of my children for 12 years now. And not only does she take care of the kids, but she takes care of all the staff, and she's been known to take care of a few parents or two that have had silly questions that said, "Can you help me with this?" She's a wonderful person. The letters that the kids wrote were just filled with love and appreciation, and I know that our whole community appreciates her. She also, in her spare time, my son, when he was in second grade, she was his catechism teacher, and he thought it was funny, because he was already a head taller than her, and I have that picture, and that's one of his favorite. So this is very special for me. This is a special woman. And on behalf of the Hampton City School Board, we'd like to congratulate Eleanor Kimble, Armstrong School for the Arts, Virginia PTA Outstanding School Nurse Award, signed by our Chairman Martha Mugler and our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Linda Shiflett. Thank you. I know you have some people here.
My kids are all taller than me at school. I have my husband, Leon Kimble, my daughter Brianna, who is a graduate of Hampton High, and our lady, oh, excuse me, Wayman Mary, the college of. My girlfriend, Mary Quarles, who is just a retired school nurse, Linda Lawrence, my boss, my other boss, Levia Stovall, Principal at Armstrong, and Nancy Esam. And, excuse me, another, Allison, I'm sorry. Yes, Allison is one of our kindergarten teachers, and also, Ms. Goodman came. She's one of our nurses too at Eaton, so I really appreciate all the support. I had some that wanted to come, but they got sick, so I couldn't take care of those germs, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You're welcome.
That concludes this evening's recognition. So congratulations again to our Dove Award winner, Ms. Vandever, and congratulations to you, Ms. Kimble, for all the work you do in taking care of our children. We move on to this evening's consent agenda, consists of items 4.01 through 4.06, Personnel Report 13-18, 4.02, which is the revocation of license, 4.03, field trips, 4.04, the minutes of the October 2, 2013 School Board Meeting, minutes of the Community Priorities Workshop of October 16, and item 4.06, which is the certification of the closed meeting of October 2, 2013. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Second. It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Mrs. Henry, that we approve tonight's consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Ms. Bowers, would you call the vote? Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Motion carries. We move into our Superintendent and Staff Reports for tonight. Items 5.01 through 5.05, and I will turn things over now to Dr. Linda Schiflett.
Thank you, Ms. Mugler. Over the course of the next few School Board meetings, you'll be hearing a lot about the work that we'll be doing within Hampton City Schools with our instructional programs. Tonight, we'll have a report from our Language Arts Department, and Dr. Johnson, would you like to introduce the members, please?
Good evening. At this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Tiffany Hardy, Curriculum Leader for English Language Arts, to move to the podium, and she will introduce her staff as I bring up her presentation.
Good evening, Chair Mugler, Vice Chair Kilgore, Superintendent Schiflett, members of the Board, staff and community. I'm very excited to introduce the members of my staff who could be with us this evening. Over to my right, I've got Debbie Feringer, who is our Expert and Teacher Specialist working with 3-5, and I will wait until she stands. These people hate the spotlight. I cannot tell you how much they like the behind-the-scenes work, and they do a wonderful job with it, but they're in the spotlight right now. And Debbie works with 3-5. And then, we also have Marsha Grant, who is our Teacher Specialist, and she partners with me in Secondary. And then, we could not have with us this evening Darlene Ingram. She is continuing her education, and she is always seeking professional development, but she is our guru with K-2, and she and Debbie work closely with our elementary program. So that is our Language Arts Team. And so, I will, I will begin by talking to you about the fact that a lot of the changes that we're facing in Language Arts have required us to approach change in curriculum and instruction in a multi-tiered process. And so, Phase 1 involved adoption of the new standards and the new curriculum design, as well as implementation of new assessments. And I've spoken to the Board previously about how we've gone through the process of adopting and implementing those pieces. The second phase, the work that we're doing throughout this year, the moving-forward piece, this is where we're going to be looking at what the data tells us on what we're doing well, where we need to beef up our work in terms of rigor, and the direction we need to go in. To remind the Board, our program for K through 5 is based on a lot of research, including all of the findings of the J-LARX study. And in Secondary, our program aligns directly with the new 2010 standards, and it focuses heavily on differentiation at the secondary level, which, as I've shared with the Board previously, is not an easy concept, and it's taken a pedagogical shift for our staff. And so, this is a huge process and a big turn for our teachers, as well as administrators in the buildings. In addition, in order to support this work, we've had to not only refine what we're doing at the core, but also identify the criteria for selecting students who need more support. So we have further clarified the intervention criteria, selection, and supports. We've also worked with administrators on how to help monitor at the building level. Our K-2 program, if I can just remind you, is, is based on building a strong literacy foundation for our children, and from K through 2, they are learning to read. And the focus is on building those pillars, those fundamental skills that they'll need for the upper grades. And then, we take that shift when we get into 3rd grade, where they're reading to learn. We focused in K-2 on word study, which we've now brought into Grade 3, so we've spiraled that up. Our focus on differentiated word study is teaching students how to examine the parts of words, words within structure, patterns, so that they can not only decode new and unfamiliar terms, but also encode those things into their own speech and into their own writing. Keep in mind that these changes do take time, and that's where the bulk of our professional development support and our resources have been over the last year and into this year. And also, in the upper grades, we're focusing on differentiated reading instruction with the use of the leveled readers that I've talked about previously. One thing that we're really focusing on Grades 3 through 5 with our teachers is learning how to focus on stage of reader, rather than grade level. And the reason for that is because we know that children do not develop all at the exact same pace. And if we continue to just hit them with what we assume is going to be the grade-level appropriate text, it assumes that children are all identical. And the last thing we would want to do is try and make a bunch of robots. What we want is to meet our children where they are as individuals and move them forward. And so, that's one of the reasons that we have spiraled word study up into Grade 3. And then, to recap, for Secondary, our 6 through 12, as I shared earlier, we're moving differentiation in. And the reason that I shared that this is a challenge is that many of our secondary teachers were trained, and their love of literature leads them to be excited to teach that one text, that one novel. But we recognize that our students are neither ready for that, nor does it appeal to them. And so, we are working with teachers to make that shift, to help them learn how to differentiate text selection and delivery to support students at the secondary level. This requires teachers to use a lot of data, to understand the profile of a student, rather than just the profile of a class or a school. It means that we're actually getting to know them as individuals and as learners, and then meeting them where they are. We've also used our data in Grades 5 and 8 to give advance warning to our middle and our high schools, as those students are now rising into 6 and 9, so that their transitions are smoother, so that we can identify children who are going to be at risk or in need before they arrive, rather than weeks or even months into their new school year. Now, the focus of the presentation tonight needs to be on three critical areas, and that is the alignment of the written, taught, and tested curricula. And that's where we're focusing a lot of the professional development support that we're providing throughout the year. We're utilizing the VDOE resources that we've been provided to ensure that the curricula we've been writing are aligned to the standards. And this includes the 2010 standards, the blueprint, the framework, as well as the continual trickle of information that we receive from the Department of Education, which we then share immediately with our teachers. Sometimes, we provide that information in narrative, and sometimes, we convert it in PowerPoints, presentations, workshops, make-it-and-take-its, and videos. We're turning the information from the VDOE into viable resources for our teachers. We've also examined a skills progression to make sure that we're focusing on the appropriate essential skills at each and every grade level. We can use the SPBQs, those are the Performance by Question Reports from the Standards of Learning Tests, to help us identify where we need to put more emphasis in our instruction to make sure that we are aligning instruction to the essential skills where we see our students struggling. We are also using a variety of data to identify not only student reading levels, but also gaps for individual learners. And that data comes from multiple sources, including the PALS, the DRA, and the SRI. The PALS assessment I've spoken to you about with, at length, in multiple previous reports, the DRA, the Developmental Reading Assessment, and the SRI, the Scholastic Reading Inventory. Each of these helps the teacher to identify the reading level of the student, as well as to identify which of their students are struggling readers, which ones are on-grade-level readers, and which of their students really are accelerated readers who need that enrichment to keep them going. If we didn't have this critical data, teachers would just be teaching to the curriculum. And we don't want that. We want our teachers teaching to the students. Use the curriculum, use the standards, use the data to figure out what is the most appropriate direction and set of strategies and resources for the individual learners. One of the things that we have tweaked or improved in the upper grades and elementary is that Debbie has gone in, Debbie Feringer has gone in, and created some alternative rotations for small group instruction. And we're not getting away from what the research tells us, we're continuing the small group instruction, but she's giving teachers options for the frequency and the rotation, so that teachers can evaluate, based on the learning diversity in their classroom, they may need to see certain groups more frequently than others. So it's not just every group gets the exact same rotation or cycle. And so, teachers are able to choose which rotation best fits the group of students they have in their classroom. So that's one area that we have adjusted to make sure we're responding to what the data tells us. We also make sure to go through and evaluate how well K through 2 are building towards the 3rd through 5th assessment. And we can use the data from the SOLs to tell us where there are gaps that we need to front-end fill earlier on. We also are embedding a lot more critical thinking opportunities, opportunities that mirror the rigor of the assessments, and we are working diligently to remove all test prep practice. We are focusing more on critical reading, and the added bonus or the end gain of good instruction is that you perform well on rigorous assessments. So that's a change and a shift that we're trying to take our teachers, as well as our schools, in. The alignment of the written to the taught curriculum, this requires us to look at how the written curriculum we provide is delivered, and how closely the teacher interpretation of that document matches our intent, as well as the intent by the State Department. And there are multiple ways that we can work to increase the fidelity to the Hampton City Schools model. We want to make sure that our teachers aren't getting off course, and of course, we trust that it's not ill-intent. Often, it's confusion or resorting to the area of comfort. And so, what we do in our department is try and build comfort and clear understanding, meet directly with teachers, co-plan with the teams. A lot of the work that we're doing now is job embedded, side-by-side with teams, trying to help them work through to be strategic, systematic, and logical in their approach to the delivery of the intended curriculum. We also work with teachers to coach them through the process on choosing appropriate text. And you would think that that sounds like an easy task. I give a student assessment, I get a number, I go into the book room, I choose a book that matches. That sounds easy. That's not really how it should work. What you have to do is look at that data as one piece of the puzzle. Again, we're training teachers to look at the entire profile of the learner, rather than just that bottom number score. Because in any assessment, kids have good and bad days. And so, we teach teachers how to not only choose that text, but then how to do informal assessment, ongoing, how to listen to the children read out loud, how to question appropriately to determine whether or not that level book they've selected really is the right fit for the child. So it's not just go in, pick a book, that's it, that's your book for the next two weeks. It's more about this ongoing instinctive experience the teacher has between teacher and child every time there's an interaction or reading. We also are helping teachers to identify appropriate criteria to select for intervention they provide for their children, as well as the types of strategies and intervention activities they can do with children that will pinpoint or that will target those specific areas of gap. So just saying you give a child intervention isn't enough, unless what you're doing is targeting the specific root cause of the deficit. Too often, we choose the things that are the symptoms of a problem, rather than the actual root cause of the problem. And so, teachers are having to learn, even if they teach 3rd or 4th grade, to take a step back to skills that are kindergarten or first-grade skills that they realize were not mastered, and to reinforce and to build those. If you reinforce and build those critical foundation skills, the children become much more fluent, and they have higher levels of comprehension than just putting a Band-Aid fix on an on-grade-level essential skill. So working side-by-side with teachers to make sure to address both areas. We're also working on training with teachers, and as I shared, the job embedded side-by-side, co-planning and modeling and coaching teachers through, those are critical pieces of it, as well as direct delivery. In K-2, Darlene has been working on bringing together the combination of the stage of speller with word study, the stage of reader, and bringing it together to create this profile of a reader. Because again, what has to develop in the brain between kindergarten and 3rd grade is such an amazing development, that teachers need to see how the child develops all throughout the course of a year. It's not slow. And what you have to do is make sure that you are continuing to examine the change, because when it happens for a child, you have to be on top of, and be ready to jump to the next level with them. So that's the focus we've had with K-2. In K-3, we've been working on continuing to build up capacity with word study. So our 3rd grade teachers, many of them are new to it. Some of them were chomping at the bit and didn't want to wait until this year, which I know you would think is surprising, because it is very challenging, and it takes a lot of planning. But after seeing the improvement in the PALS results, teachers in Grade 3 were saying, you know, it really is working, we've got to be moving it up to Grade 3. We're having to hold some of our 4th grade and 5th grade teachers and start the training with them, because they're ready to now see the growth and the gains in that area. But in K through 2, we have teachers who move from other grade levels. And so, we needed to make sure to provide training to each teacher regardless of what their previous experience was. We had to go through and identify basically the tiers of knowledge and skill of each teacher to make sure to provide the appropriate training to those individuals. We're also providing training support to reading specialists on a monthly basis, reading coaches, reading interventionists, and we partner very closely with Title I. And we're also doing a lot of support with our building leaders. Our instructional leaders have been asking for continued support, because they are very focused and very driven to maximize Language Arts. And so, we're doing trainings with them, we're partnering with them in walkthroughs and instructional rounds, so that we can help to refine the lens through which they examine the instruction, and they monitor the instruction in their buildings. And then, the alignment of the taught and the tested, taught-to-tested curriculum, as I mentioned earlier, we're having to make sure that we're aligning to the technology-enhanced items. And as I shared at a previous meeting, many teachers initially said, "Oh, our kids are tech-savvy, they've got it." Well, the technology isn't really what the challenge of the TEIs is all about. The technology is what enables the questions, or enhances the nature of the question, to enable the question itself to be more rigorous. So it's not about whether or not a child can move a mouse on a keypad, or that they can click and move things in the right place. As a matter of fact, you can mirror the TEIs with slips of paper. You can mirror it on a SMARTboard or a Promethean board. There are many different ways to mirror the actual rigor. The challenge is teaching children that there's more than one right answer. And we have a large number of children who have lived in a system where they have been told that there's one right answer, that one right answer is one of four options. You can use logic to get rid of two, and you can narrow it down, and if you're a really good guesser, you're likely to get a large majority of them correct, without even reading the question. And now, all of a sudden, we're telling them, "Oh, you have to think, and you have to think critically, and you have to evaluate the difference among all of your options, and sometimes, there's more than one right answer." This is a completely new scheme of thinking. And so, we've got to give our students those kinds of experiences in the classroom. The reason I like moving that direction is because the world is not full of multiple choice. The world is full of opportunities for critical thinking, and moving that direction will help to prepare our students to be more prepared for the life beyond school, and not just to be wise test takers. So one of the things we're doing is showing our teachers how to embed TEIs without making them test prep. And what I mean by this is there are many ways that you can actually make a TEI question part of discovery, where students learn more about a text, or they get to the analysis part, or the analysis level of thinking because of the wording of the question. And they just happen to get practice for the test as an added bonus. So trying to help teachers understand that these practice items should be embedded as part of the learning process, and not as test prep. So that's one of the areas. And the ways we're doing that is giving them samples, we're providing them with models for a lot of the different texts that they're choosing with their students. Debbie has gone through and created a multitude of options to use, aligned with each of the trade books that our teachers can use for their whole group instruction. We've done training with our secondary teachers to show them how to create their own TEIs, both for their Promethean boards, as well as on little pieces of paper. It doesn't have to be technology-based to get them thinking at that more critical level. We're also showing teachers how to bring in more modes of writing, how to bring in and align and pair different genres of text. So we're no longer studying in isolation, we're looking at critical thinking, more comparison, more analysis, and of course, more evaluation. And so, that requires us to align not only our curriculum, but our assessments, benchmark, and the support we provide in the schools. Questions?
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Very thorough report, and thank you for your staff being with you as well tonight. Questions from Board members? Mrs. Henry?
Well, first is to comment always, that, you know, the wonderful teacher in Hampton City Schools used to have a big sign up on her board that said, "Nothing is accomplished without enthusiasm." And I think a positive attitude that goes with it is something we always get from Ms. Hardy, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
When we're dealing, they threw you an awful lot of curves with the tests last time.
Yes.
The, the last-minute kinds of...
The released prompts for the writing, the TEIs, the new stems.
The reading prompts and everything was...
Yes.
You mentioned that one of the things we do, one of the ways we look for areas to focus on is from released, performance by question data, performance by question. Have they given you decent performance by question data from those first tests?
Well, the first thing we had was the SPBQ report that we could go through, and we actually know the essential skill and the alignment to the specific standard based on the question number. So we were able to use, and we could actually kind of gauge what a, depending on which form a child had, but we could gauge the types of questions. Now, we didn't... Now, we didn't know the exact wording of the stems because there are many stems that haven't been released to us. But one of the things that we're doing is trying to expose our teachers and thereby expose our students to the range of stems. We don't want them only able to answer a question if asked one way. So that was a first piece of it. But recently, actually, within the last week, the DOE released a PowerPoint where they explained and gave examples of the types of items that students really struggled with, some of them TEI and some of them not, showed exactly where the language was confusing to students. A lot of it has to do with the academic vocabulary is more rigorous than it used to be using abstract terms, and they did that only for the end of course. So we're looking for them to release that kind of more explicit analysis for each of the other grade levels.
But they're still fiddling around with it enough that they're not going to give you a release test yet?
No, they're guaranteeing no release tests until 2015, I think it was, if then.
If then.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I know when, sometimes when they give those data things, they give them by such broad categories that it's like in algebra, gee, you need to work on inequalities. Well, hello, that's half of algebra, that's not very helpful. But if you know that it has to do at least with punctuation of declarative sentences or something versus punctuation for interrogatory.
Well, we are able to use the SPBQs to target specific essential skills, and then what we do is delve into not only other release tests, but we also talk to our colleagues in other divisions, we look at the research, and we look at all of the different ways that those essential skills could be assessed, not because we want to create mirrors of the test. And to be honest with you, some of those release tests became the bane of my existence. People just printing test after test and getting away from good hardcore teaching. So it really helped us to just highlight the most critical essential skills, identify where our kids are struggling at each grade level, and then go in and really focus on enhancing that more in our curriculum program. So it has helped us to identify some critical essential skill gaps.
So we're teaching teachers how to formulate better questions, not how to teach children how to answer test questions?
Yes, absolutely. As a matter of fact, that was a training that I recently did with a group of administrators and lead teachers. They worked collaboratively, and that is one of the things that we're focusing on walkthroughs, and it's one of the things we're focusing on for teacher training as well as instructional leadership. And so really narrowing down and focusing on critical areas, learning intentions, questioning strategies, and either the success criteria we use to measure student growth and/or the way we give feedback, just really taking a lot of the superfluous things that distract us out of the picture and focusing on those critical things that research tells us are going to get the most gains.
It's a very critical thing if you can get children to realize there's always more than one right answer.
Oh, I can't agree with you more.
And that having a difference of opinion about the answer is the beginning of some real learning and discussion.
My favorite classes in language, in English in college, were not the ones where the professor told me about the conversation he'd had with an author posthumously in which he happened to know everything the author intended. Rather, we had discussions and we brought our own life experience and interpretations in. That's where I became passionate about literature. And so we want to breed that same enthusiasm for our children, and we have to allow them to think for themselves to do that. Other comments or questions from board members?
I just had a comment to, it was what Phyllis said, because your enthusiasm, and I know Carolyn Holmes is coming up, and she's got as much enthusiasm about math, is very refreshing, very much appreciated. I know, we all know it's hard work, and y'all work along with your team and try to get our children where they need to be and our staff, and I just appreciate the enthusiasm that both of y'all show when you come up and do your presentations.
You're welcome, but we get it from our staff and our kids. And all you have to do is sit next to a child who has struggled for 10 years, 15 years, and all of a sudden reads a book, closes it, and says, I can read.
Well, I had a child who was fortunate enough to have a first-grade teacher that noticed that he had some reading deficits and worked real hard. And all during elementary, his deficits were in language arts, and now he's in high school and he excels at it because she recognized it, and she helped him turn that light bulb on. She's sitting right over there, Ms. Eason.
They all deserve to win the lottery, and that's what we're working towards.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anything for... Thank you so much.
Thank you all for your support.
Dr. Shiflett?
So continuing our reports in the instructional arena is, next up is our mathematics curriculum leader, Dr. Johnson. Would you do the introductions, please?
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Carolyn Holmes, curriculum leader for mathematics, and she will introduce her team while I'm bringing up her presentation.
Good evening. I am excited. I do teach math and supervise math and love it. I do want to introduce my team that's here with me tonight. We have Stan, Cindy Beard, who is elementary teacher specialist. We have Leslie Strawn Williams, who's an elementary teacher specialist, and we have Diane Schoonover, who's our secondary teacher specialist. So we are really excited that they took their time this evening to support me as a team. Thank you all. We also have Cheryl Ashley, and Cheryl is the curriculum integration technology teacher. We call them C-I-T-Ts. She works very closely with us, and as well as Tammy Hughes, who's our administrative support specialist. We came before you several times, especially over the last few years, and you might have seen this statement before. This came about two years ago from our superintendent of public instruction, and she warned us that there was a change in our mathematics. It was, it's more rigorous, the assessments are new, the format is new as well. But she also indicated that it does not mean that our students are learning less. What it means is that we're expecting more from our students. So actually, tonight, we do come with some success. We're excited about, this is only the second year of implementation of the new standards. We've had two tests at this point. We're into our third year, and 83% of our schools increased in percent passing last year. 16% increase in fourth grade, we're excited about that. 89% of our tested grades experienced success or an increase over the year before. And I purposely put this one in, 69% of our grade seven students are taking above-level courses, which means they are taking what we call Course Two Honors. And last year was the first implementation of that course. So they are taking Course Two Honors or Algebra One. And we had 900 pass advance, 900 students who received pass advance last year. So we did increase over the year before, only in the second year. Our instructional goals, our process standards, as in language arts, we're teaching our students to think. It's not just about the algorithm, it's not just about doing 29 times 12 and understanding to multiply the two times nine. We're thinking that we are teaching our students to think, problem-solving, where they can go into the workforce and understand how to mathematically solve problems by communication, communicating their mathematics, by making connections, by reasoning, by representing their mathematics. These are what we call our process standards. And our process standards are embedded not just in Hampton City Schools, they are also in NCTM, which is the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics, as well as VCTM, Virginia Council of Teachers of Mathematics. So they are research-based. So we're teaching our students to be thinkers. Think about the mathematics, think about the problem, and then before you even start to solve the problem. When we look at our curriculum, our written, our taught, our assessed, the first thing we do before we embark upon writing curriculum, we take a look at the documents that's provided for us by the Virginia Department of Education. We look at our framework, we look at our technical assistance plan, we look at the blueprint summary, and we unpack the standards. Once we unpack the standards, then we start writing our curriculum. We have curriculum documents, we have vertical articulation documents, and we are pleased that this year we implemented new textbooks with online components in most of our classes. In fact, in K-1, 2, and 4, we implemented new textbooks this year, as well as grade 7 and geometry. So the online assessment, students can assess their books from home, access their books from home, and we're real pleased about that. After we actually create our documents, teachers need to teach using those documents. So in order to, we do have some expectations for our teachers. We have in elementary school, we have 60-minute block. In middle and high school, we have 90-minute block. It's not just the block, it's the effective use of the time. So we have a lot of staff development on how to implement a 60-minute or 90-minute block. We use our pacing guides, teachers use their pacing guides, as well as differentiated instruction. We have three focus areas, and our three focus areas are differentiated instruction, problem-solving as a process, and building that conceptual understanding. And all of our PD, professional development, is embedded in those three models. We provide support. We are pleased that we have human resources through our interventionists in our Title I schools, we have coaches, and of course, we have our specialists as well. Professional development, we have professional development site base, as well as division-wide staff development, webinars, and we are really excited about our university connection. We are connected with Hampton University. We have a problem-solving process, a problem-solving teacher circle, which we meet quite a bit during the year, and it's not just with Hampton, it's also with other school divisions. We also have partnership with Women Mary, longtime partnership with them, with teacher specialist program, as well as we just, I think Dr. Johnson attended a meeting today, and that meeting was with a new proposal with K-2 teachers as well as 68 teachers. So we have had a longtime partnership with Women Mary, and we're continuing that. Now, our most recent partnership is with UVA, and we're excited about that because my excitement comes from the person that's facilitating is one of our own. He is Dr. Barry, Robert Barry III. He's a 1986 graduate of Bethel. He's a mathematician, and he's also a researcher. He was here last Tuesday, staff development with our principals and our MIT Math Improvement Team group, and he's going to be here tomorrow. Tomorrow, we're going to do some walkthroughs in several of our buildings. He's going to, it's going to be a sustained partnership. He's also coming back on the 5th, and we have several other opportunities that we are writing him in right now to come back to Hampton to provide professional, research-based staff development for us. So we're excited about that. When we look at our assess, going to our assess, in making assessments, we always, again, go right back to VDOE documents. And the Virginia Department of, the Virginia Department of Education provide assessment blueprints as well as SPVQ. We segregate those, we look at those, and that's how we determine our next step. That's what we look at when we're creating our benchmarks, as well as frequent missed questions and technology-enhanced items. It's worthwhile to state that last year was the first year in elementary school that technology-enhanced items counted toward their score. Actually, with the secondary, the year before they counted, and in elementary school, we did pretty well this year, even with that new addition. The math department provide all kinds of assessments and support. Of course, we set benchmark assessments, we create four-and-a-half weeks assessments, common assessments. After we analyze the data, we review the data and then determine what else is needed. So that's our written, our taught, and our assessed. We do believe every child, every day, whatever it take, and we do believe in team, working together as a team. Our motto is team squared. Together, everyone achieves more, and teaching using engaging activities in mathematics. Thank you.
Thank you.
I love her.
Team squared, right?
Team squared.
Okay. Thank you very much. Very nice, comprehensive report, and it is, I did like one of your earlier slides where you did talk about the progress that we've made in just one year's time with the new test.
We're moving in the right direction.
Absolutely, absolutely. Questions from other board members? Mrs. Smith?
Great progress. It's just exciting to see that, and it's wonderful. And I hate to try to go into one negative thing, but I was wondering, when Dr. Cooper presented the SOL results, the grade seven math was low scores, but you had talked about how 69% of our grade seven students are taking these advanced classes, which is wonderful. So could you speak to that a little bit?
Sure. In the middle school, on each grade level, we have three course offerings. So when we look at grade six, grade six, we have Course One, Course One Honors. Both groups take the grade six assessment. And we have pre-algebra. The pre-algebra students in grade six take the eighth grade assessment. When we look at grade seven, we have Course Two, who take the Course Two assessment, which is grade seven assessment. We have Course Two Honors, and the students take the grade eight assessment. We have Algebra One, and of course, they take the Algebra One assessment. So we only have a small segment of our students that actually take the Course Two assessment or the grade seven assessment. And as I said before, this is the, last year was the first year we implemented Course Two Honors. It's a good leadway, but again, most of our students that's taking Course Two, we're working really hard with the online assessments and the resources that we have provided to move them to the next level. But when we look at our tier, they're more, most are Tier Three students.
Okay. Thank you for explaining that.
I have a two-part question.
Yes.
And they go together. Are all of our middle school students double-blocking math now?
All 90 minutes every day.
Okay, all middle schools.
90 minutes every day.
Okay, so if you have some kids in middle school, I mean, you have the child that could take pre-algebra in sixth, algebra in seventh, and geometry in eighth, or you might have the student that doesn't take algebra until eighth, then they move up to high school, or maybe they have to take algebra over again in ninth grade. Are they double-blocking algebra and geometry in the high schools?
We have some double-block in high school, but most are 90 minutes every other day.
Okay.
And we did have tremendous success with Algebra One in the high schools this year. We're really pleased with that, and I think because we went from Course One, most of the students went from Course One, Course Two, and Course Three, they had that solid foundation. So they were ready for the Algebra One at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board members with questions tonight?
All right. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Dr. Shiflett?
Our next report is a debriefing about our community priorities workshop that was held on October 16th. Again, it was a most successful event, and so I've asked Ms. Anne Bain to come back tonight and provide an overview of what transpired that evening.
Thank you, Ms. Mugler and Mr. Pilgore, members of the board. I appreciate the opportunity to report to you this... I appreciate the opportunity to report to you this evening. I must say, I've often considered myself a bit of a cheerleader, but I would prefer next time to have the opportunity to go ahead of the Language Arts and Mathematics, if that's okay. It is my joy to present to you about our Community Priorities Workshop, which of course, took place on October sixteenth. And I'd like to say personally that it means so much to me that you take one of your work sessions every year to do this meeting and engage our community. I know that the participants always enjoy it, the community appreciates it, and it's especially important to my work. Thank you. For the benefit of our audience, we'll just do a quick review of what is the Community Priorities Workshop? Well, it's a means to increase our community's ownership of our school division. It's an award-winning process, and I want to just take a moment to say that we received the Virginia Tech Excellence in Education Award in 2007 for the process, and we're recognized with the National Civic Star Award in 2008. And this process is being replicated by a number of school divisions across the Commonwealth now as well. So, why do we do the Community Priorities Workshop? Because we've said it for many years now, we believe community ownership is the key to the creation of a high-performance school division. And our objective is to annually engage the whole community, or at least a representative cross-section of the whole community, in shaping a shared set of outcomes for the school division. And there are typically recommendations, as you know, in support of our Hampton City Schools' mission, but there have been two exceptions. And the first exception was in 2010, when we utilized the process to focus, if you will, the implementation of our Strategic Plan 2015, because we knew we couldn't do it all at one time. So, the community gave us some direction with regard to where to start. And then again, in 2011, we all recall that we were facing a very challenging budget year, and we reached out to our community to gauge their priorities for our upcoming budget. Very successful process as well. Who are our Community Priorities Workshop stakeholders? Well, they are a diverse cross-section of our internal, so inside of our school division, and external stakeholders representing the following, and I won't read them to you, but I will say that we take great care to make sure that the individuals who are invited within each stakeholder group are very representative of the community in terms of the rich diversity of our community. So, that includes gender, and age, and race, and even geography, so that when you are at the Community Priorities Workshop, ideally, what you're seeing is a reflection of the face of the city of Hampton. Just a bit about the workshop process, and that is, of course, we welcome our guests and give an overview, and this year, part of that overview was a really wonderful report from our superintendent with regard to the tremendous work that was undertaken by our school division and the exceptional amount of progress that was made in the past year with regard to the priorities from the year previous. It was certainly well-received and appreciated by the group. Following that, we broke out into like groups. So, that means that teachers went with teachers, parents went with parents, the business community went with the business community in their like groups, and we took them through a facilitated process to identify their top three priorities within their like group. I'd like to take this time to offer a real shout-out to our facilitators this year. For the first time, we engaged our internal folks, who are members of our ODU Leadership Cohort within the school division. As part of their education, they receive training in facilitation, which will be a great skill for them as they become leaders in our division. But, they were kind enough to volunteer those services that evening to provide the facilitation, and, you know, we do a survey at the end to get some feedback from the community, and we got great feedback with regard to our facilitators as well. So, we're grateful to them. After that work, we have the groups come back and report out to the group at large, so that we hear, everyone hears the top three priorities of each of the like groups. And then we kind of shuffle the deck, if you will. So, we mix everyone up, so that when we go back into what we call mixed groups, they will be reflective of all the groups that are present there this evening, or that evening. And then following that, similar work, they take the top three priorities of all the groups in the like groups, they work from them, and then come up with their top three priorities they report out as well. So, we've gone through the process. Now, let's talk about what our, what the results were and what our recommendations are for our priorities for the coming year. And just a bit about the way I'll share it with you, all of the mixed-group results, so the things that we got back from the mixed group are reported as bulleted text, and then you'll see them under a heading that is the recommended name of that priority, because there's an awful lot of overlap from the reporting, as you recall. And then, finally, what I'd like to do is share with you our priorities as they align beautifully with our strategic plan. So, the first is career, college, and life readiness, and I'll just put up here for you exactly what we heard from the participants. And if I may, I'd share with you that our participants seem not only interested in our students being very well-prepared for college and career, but life as well, and life in terms of their skills to be able to do the simple things that we're all called upon to do regularly, balance our checkbooks, those kinds of things, but also the softer skills of being mindful of being on time, and things that are as simple as looking someone in the eye when we're speaking to them, and being respectful in that way. So, we tried to capture all of that. Also, recruit, develop, support, and retain exceptional teachers. You'll notice that this is very similar to one of our strategic goals, but the key differences is the added word of support. And our community was adamant about the fact that they want us, as an organization, but also our community at large, to support our teachers and let them know how much we support them. And then also, the word teachers. While our strategic goal, and certainly our community as well, values and respects all of our exceptional staff, their emphasis for this year was on teachers. Technology, I was somewhat surprised and very delighted at not only the knowledge about, but the enthusiasm for our one-to-one initiative. There was just a lot of conversation in the groups that evening, and then also about other opportunities for not only bringing their own individual devices for instructional purposes, and also, they want to make sure that we are doing everything we can to make sure that our young people have access to the technology and the technology infrastructure to support their learning. Also, middle school extracurricular activities. And we heard, you know, a little bit about sports, but we heard about other things as well, the interest in after-school clubs, in perhaps the arts, art band, the music, those kinds of things. Special education programs and support. Of course, an emphasis there on improving, I'm sorry, improving resources and parental involvement. And facilities, and I'll take a moment to call your attention to this beautiful nighttime shot of Baron Elementary School and the improvement there, and share that while it is absolutely breathtaking, I think it is also a security and safety improvement, and that's, you know, something that we heard a lot about from those folks. And today, as I drove past Cary, you know, I was, got a little bit giddy about the fact that we'll be seeing that at Cary Elementary School soon as well. So, this is just a quick peek at, again, our priorities, career, college, and life readiness, and how they align to our strategic goals. And you'll see that all of our goals are reflected here. Recruit, develop, support, and retain exceptional teachers. Middle school extracurricular activities. Special education programs and support, and facilities. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be delighted to entertain any questions. And again, thank you for giving me your meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Bain, and thank you for always providing such excellent leadership in the process of going through our Community Priorities Workshop. It's always so meticulously orchestrated, and I know that's well due to your skills in putting that together. So, we appreciate your work on that very much.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and we'll, we continue to improve the process. We use that feedback that we get at the end of each of our workshops and really take a hard look at it and see how we can make it better and better each year. Thank you.
Okay. Any comments or questions from other board members? Mrs. Smith?
Just one thing, I just want to let you know, this is one of my favorite activities we do throughout the year, is this Community Priorities Workshop. And it was great to see the attendance is still high. There is still such, the community really likes to be involved in this. And what I took away from it this time was the community seemed much, even more excited than ever to really be involved in our schools. And when you look at a lot of the bullet items under there, they talked about wanting to volunteer and help with our facilities, provide resources and volunteers. They wanted to, they talked about having speakers come to the schools that are experienced in different life skills. They talked about volunteering to read to children in the schools, teacher morale, bringing in meal. I mean, it was just really impressive to me this year, how much they stood out. So, we need to really take advantage of that and use all that, because I really see the community wanting to do that, so.
Absolutely. And I think we saw it at the beginning of the school year, and we're seeing it ongoing, and that momentum's just building, but you're absolutely right, and we would, you know, we'd be remiss if we didn't grab onto that and take advantage.
Absolutely. Juree, Ms. Bolton?
Well, first, I wanted to say that I was so excited to be able to attend the Community Priorities Workshop this year, and one of the conversations that we had as a student group was that it was so amazing to see so many different people from so many different professions and walks of life that was interested in our future, and interested in our education. And that was something that was really encouraging to all of the students that was there. And then, the other half of it was in my mixed group. A lot of the issues that people were bringing up were things that were already taken care of, and then it was a communication problem. So, I thought that that was a good thing on half of Hampton City Schools, because it wasn't that it wasn't there, it was just that people didn't know. And a lot of those things had to do with recognitions, and it felt good to be able to say, well, we have school notes, and we have recognitions at school board meetings. You just have to come out and use the resources that we have available. But, I always think that it's a great avenue to be able to communicate directly with so many different groups, and I just wanted to thank you for putting it all together and working as hard as you did to make it happen.
Well, thank you, and it's my joy, and I have to take this opportunity to say that my favorite thing always about the Community Priorities Workshop is the engagement, and ultimately, the performance of our students who attend and participate. And I know consistently from year to year that the community members who attend and participate are wowed by you and the likes of you, Ms. Bolton. And it's always my pleasure to put you out there in front of them, and I'm never surprised when they elect to have you report out for them and when they are wowed by you.
Thank you.
Very true, very true. Mr. Harper?
No, no, I was.
Oh.
Giving her some power.
You were pointing at someone else. Oh, at her. Okay. Thank you so much, Ms. Bain. Dr. Shifflit?
And I too want to echo what Mrs. Mugler said about the amount of work that goes into the Community Priorities Workshop, and to say my special thanks to, to Ms. Bain for the amount of work that always goes into that, and the way it comes off so effortlessly. So, thank you so much. Our next report is something that we put into our budget for this year as a cost-savings measure. It's Synergistics update, and so, Dr. Hellman, if you'll introduce our presenters this evening?
Yes, ma'am, I will. Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the board, it's an extreme pleasure tonight to bring this report to you. Before I do the introductions, perhaps just a very brief recap of how we got here. We started in discussions with a corporation called Energy Educators probably some three years or so ago. And as we continued to look into the options, we began to say to ourselves, you know, hey, this is, this is something that we think we can really, really make work. We put an RFI out last fall, followed up by an RFP, and then in December of 2012, we entered into a contract with Synergistics. They have changed their name from Energy Educators into Synergistics. Then, our next step was to move forward and hire the energy specialists. And I tell everybody, Mr. Sawyer gets tired of me telling him this, I've told the people from Synergistics this, we are so fortunate to be a division of our size that we can have two energy specialists, because during the interview process, two candidates clearly rose to the top, and it would have been an impossible decision to choose between one of these two gentlemen before you as an energy specialist. So, we were very fortunate that we were able to hire both of them. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Phil Malillo and Mr. John Cobley, who have some very exciting news to show to you as soon as I get it up on the screen here.
Good evening. I'm Phil Malillo, and this is John Cobley. We're the energy specialists for Hampton City Schools, and we're here today to report to you on the first six months of our energy management program. So, so far, our successes have totaled a number of $178,000, which roughly represents about 10.6% of our utility budget to this point over the past six months. This next graph shows a breakdown of the monthly trend savings. We started officially in April of 2013 and finished up in September. You can see, perhaps most importantly, that we are getting a continued savings month after month after month. That negative $14,000 is a function of a very cool spring, and as a result, we had to run our heating, we had to run our heating systems a little bit longer. So, in addition to an increase in electricity, also, natural gas costs are factored into there as well. This chart shows a distribution of our utility expenses. Last year, in our base year, which is from April of 2012 to March of 2013, we spent a total of just over three-and-a-half million dollars on utilities, with electricity making up a large majority of that, 85.2%. Over the past six months, John and I have spent a good bit of our time focusing on our machines and our processes that use electricity, because that would be the place where we could find the most savings. This trend sheet, or this trend graph is showing, the blue line represents our base year and the utilities we consume, and the red line is where we are so far. And I think probably the most important thing to see about this is that from the time we started, that we've been consistently below where we were in the past. And what we're doing is establishing a baseline of energy conservation, and we've got a large majority of our schools and our employees on board. Particularly in the summertime, we saw 16% drop from June to September through the efforts of our summer shutdown. And again, what we really strive to do is make sure that our buildings are in great shape when there are people there, but when there are places that are unused, that we have things shut down and we're running things as efficiently as possible. This next graph is a breakdown of the actual dollar amounts through the past six months. You'll see that a unit cost has not increased at all, meaning that we're basically operating at the same cost per square foot for our buildings. Total avoided use in kilowatt-hours, we've saved over 1.7 million kilowatt-hours to date in these past six months, which translates to about $180,000. The graphs at the bottom, the baseline, represents that gray bar and is our historical usage. The red one is our expected usage that is developed by the software we use to help display or predict what we would be using if we didn't have the energy management program. And then that blue bar is what our actual usage is. And you can see that we were below what we used last year at this time and what the computer program had predicted we would use. On the left-hand side, it's kilowatt-hours, and on the right-hand side, of course, is dollars. Avoided costs, a breakdown by actual utility. You can see electricity was $180,000. Natural gas was a $3,000 loss, and again, that speaks to a particularly cool spring in addition to having to run our boilers a little bit longer. So, that was the loss that accounts for the natural gas. The water and sewer, the savings, $1,637, for a total of $178,744, which is about 10.6% of our budget. Day-to-day, what do John and I do? To this point, we have performed over 1,000 audits in all of our buildings to get an idea of usage patterns, when the building's being used, how it's being used, and if there are ways that we can find to save energy. We spend probably three or four days a month training with Synergistic on our data analysis, on the mechanical systems, on our computer and energy management system, to really get an idea of where we can find some of our cost savings and ways we can use. an idea of where we can find some of our cost savings and ways we can use to eliminate some of the waste. We spend time working with the EMS system, which is the computer program that controls a majority of the heating and cooling systems for our schools. We work with schools to coordinate when they use their buildings and how they use their buildings. Again, if you've got a program in the building that starts at 6:00 and goes to 8:00, we don't need to run the air conditioning as a bumper on two hours on either side to make sure the room is cool. Through the work that John and I have done, I mean, a lot of times, we can bring a room down to temperature in 20 or 30 minutes, which helps us save on those two hours on either side. We work with teachers and staff who are in the buildings all day, every day, speaking with the teachers, getting an idea of what they're doing and some of the issues they're having in their classrooms. Assess and reassess the program continually. Every month, we spend a couple of days making sure we get all the utility bills in, we double-check them to make sure that our numbers are correct, and we use that information to take a look at what each building is doing, what every meter in every building is doing and try and figure out, is this falling in line with what we're trying to do or is there something, an outlier or something happening that we're not aware of? And that goes with the billing anomalies as well. Anytime you see a spike in a bill in the middle of a billing cycle, you want to figure out why. Was it a usage issue? Is there a malfunctioning piece of equipment? Is there a leak someplace? So, we do a lot of that type of work as well. The program has benefits beyond just the bottom line. In this case, the environmental benefits are widespread as well. Almost 2 million kilowatts of electricity have been saved and what that translates to is 914 metric tons of carbon dioxide removed from the atmosphere or removing 191 automobiles from a road for a year or planting 23,000 trees and letting them grow for 10 years. So, this is not only something that's helping our bottom line, but it's improving our environment as well. This is a program that involves everybody from the administration, the whole way down to the custodians and the people who use the buildings. It's really the epitome of a teamwork situation. Special thanks goes out to the school board for helping us implement the program, to Dr. Shiflett, Dr. Hellman and Mr. Sawyer for giving us support and leadership that we've needed. Alex Robbins and Frank George are our HVAC techs that have been instrumental in getting us assimilated to the EMS system and letting us know how the systems in each school run and some of the nuances and how to control them. The community for supporting our energy program, the teachers for working in their individual spaces. It's a large job to try and police every building in the entire division. The teachers really have a big hand in this, particularly during the school year, as far as what they can do to reduce their own individual classroom uses. The maintenance staff, we've been working with these guys nonstop for six months to help identify and correct any issues we have with the facilities that are wasteful or that we can do to help maximize our energy savings. Custodians are a very large part, or second shift custodians, particularly when the buildings are gone. By working with them and in working with zone cleaning schedules even in the summertime, we can utilize our building resources where they're at as opposed to using them through an entire building for people that aren't there. And principals and staff are coordinating efforts with the schools. We spend a lot of time figuring out when they're using the building and what they're using it for. Is there a better way or a better place to house some of these activities? Things that would be a little bit more energy efficient as opposed to running a whole building for one separate event. And the future of our energy program, where we go from here, is to continue the efficient operation of our facilities to make sure that our machines are running as efficiently as they can and providing the best environment for our students, maintain a good stewardship of public funds. We don't want to be wasteful. We want to make sure that the money that we're given and the way we use it is efficient as possible. Continue to reduce our environmental impact. Being a coastal community, that's one of the big draws of the area is the wonderful environment we have and anything we can do to help reduce our impact on that, I think, is a good thing. And as we switch over to heating season, which is coming up, we'll start to streamline our heating system, our boilers, making sure they're set at the right temperatures, that they're using the correct amount of gas, and work on our shutdowns for Thanksgiving break and for Christmas time. Again, we want to make sure that our buildings are warm inviting places when there's people in there, but in breaks on weekends, we want to make sure that they're shut down and not being wasteful. Questions?
Thank you very much. Board members, questions from you, Mrs. Phillips?
I just have a comment because y'all went into our schools at probably the worst time of their year, in April, when they're gearing up for SOLs and then you've got the end of the year coming and the teachers are under, the staff's under a tremendous amount of pressure and the students. And the fact that y'all got anybody to cooperate at that time is a huge kudos to you guys because I'm sure you experienced some pushback just because of, just because of the time of the year, you know? It was just a really hard time. So, congratulations to y'all for doing that and showing the savings. Very much appreciated.
And thank you, we appreciate that.
Ms. Mirdwood?
Just a comment. You know, we're always apprehensive when companies come to us and tell us how they can save us money. But if we continue to have these kinds of savings, it's going to be obvious that we made a wise decision to go with Synergistic and their plan to reduce the utility costs. And of course, with our budget restraints, $178,000 will come in handy.
Well, we hope so. We're proud of that number, we've worked hard for it. Anytime you start a new program, there's always going to be a little bit of resistance because what we really try to focus on is more of a behavior than just turning off light switches. What we want to develop is a sustainable program that'll continue on as teachers move in and out, as buildings get repurposed, things like that. We want it to be a culture of savings and being efficient. So, it's more than just working with the machines, it's working with the people and really understanding what it is that they do and some of the things we can do to help alleviate some of the issues they have in their classrooms and make sure that we are being as efficient as possible.
Mrs. Henry?
Mr. Malillo, I want to thank you for the report. I have to give your colleague a hard time here a little bit now because Mr. Cobley is a 1995 graduate of Phoebus High School and a graduate of Mr. Sawyer's apprentice program and lots of other things that we're very proud of and the parent of three kids in Hampton City Schools. But I wanted to ask, I know that things like work schedule, zone scheduling will help do some things for a energy-sucking building like Phoebus High School, which has lights, the lights alone will heat the building in Phoebus High School. It's even though they've replaced a lot of them because they're everywhere, they run all the time and there are no light switches. So, while you can get the custodians to turn off 2/3 of the building at night, that's a big savings. And I'm sure if you've managed to do that, you've done what I tried to do for six years and couldn't get done. But that's one avenue to savings. But have you gotten to the point in your audits where you're realizing that you're going to have to make some proposals to Mr. Sawyer and to us to spend a little money to save money? For example, if there were in fact, switches on the light switches in the halls and the classrooms at Phoebus High School, they could be off more than they are off now because right now, you have to hit all the circuit breakers and turn everything on and/or turn everything off and be in the dark. So, are we getting to the point where we may start making some recommendations for equipment and expenditures that will pay off in ultimately in longer, in greater savings? You want to answer that, John?
Sure. Yeah, we did a lighting upgrade project, what, two years ago? And part of that lighting upgrade project was installing switches and stuff. So, we've got that accomplished at Phoebus. I do want to say that the first month, working with the custodians and the staff over the summer, they were able to shave 77,000 kilowatt hours in one month just by turning off the lights. So, we continue to work with them every day. They catch me in there all the time, they're like, "Oh, man, we forgot to turn off those lights." Yep, remember, just turn them off. It's a switch. But yeah, I think we have some EMS stuff that we're trying to get online. A couple of schools were, you know, still the old slide thermostats and I think they've upgraded them to TECs now or TICs. And sometimes you've got to spend a little, save a lot. So, yeah, I agree with you.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Mr. Kilgore?
Oh, I'm sorry. All right.
Couple of questions. Your base year is, I guess, last year's utility cost, right? Or what are energy consumption? And so, next year, does this current year become your base year next year or do you just keep that base year going forward?
We will, the base year stays as that, last year's utility bills and what we do is we'll compare that to the base year. And really what we do is we've got the utility bills in the computer program back to 2010. So, the numbers that are generated are based off that base year, which was last year, but we're always looking to see where do we rank month to month with 2010, 2011, 2012 to make comparisons, you know? Is this a, are we being able to save money in this particular spot? Is there something going on here during this month that we need to address? But the numbers are off the base year, which was last year, utility bills.
So, you have the base, the baseline and then you have an expected expense? And then your expected expense is based on, you know, maybe, for example, the month of January last year had an average temperature of 40 degrees.
Okay.
Say we go through January this year and the average temperature is 30 degrees. Your software package factors in that and how does it do that? It doesn't impact your baseline or your expected, does it?
Well, what it does is, Energy Cap is the name of the software that we use and it actually has developed a correlation regression analysis that allows us to account for changes in temperature so that what we're doing is, we want to make sure we're comparing apples to apples. So, if, for instance, we had a very cold January, one that wasn't that cold in the base year, the software would recognize it and say, "Listen, based on these temperatures, they would have used X amount more energy just because of the temperature, not because of the energy program." We want to make sure that we take credit for the savings that we earned and not because, say, we shut down a building or, you know, we close a building. We reduce the occupancy of a place, then that utility bill is going to go down. But we won't take credit for that savings because we'll make that adjustment in the software. A good example of that as well is at Hampton High School, we just put brand-new HVAC units in the upstairs of the buildings. Well, they're a little bit larger than the old ones were. So, what we did with Synergistic's help was go through and take a look at what the old units were, how big they were and how much energy they used, and then put in the new units and what energy they used and then made that adjustment to Hampton High School, to that utility, to that electric meter. Because again, we want to make sure that the savings that we earn is based off the energy program, not because we downgraded in equipment or that the increase is not because we increased equipment.
Thank you.
Mrs. Smith?
More on to what you were just talking with Mr. Kilgore about. So, like, we installed a lot of new windows in a few schools as well. So, is that also accounted for or is that part of what you're seeing or?
I'm not sure if the windows, I would imagine if there is a number that can be associated with it as far as reflective value or an R value, but that might be something that we can add to it. But I'm not sure exactly. It's a little bit easier with the mechanical equipment because there's horsepower on the motor and you can understand how much it takes. Windows, Mac, do we do an upgrade for those?
We have an advanced simulation tool that will actually compare the baseline and then with changes, either in HVAC or windows, that type of thing, can make the adjustment, which then is entered into the software so that we are, as Phil said, really comparing apples to apples. So, anything efficiency-wise is a reduction in the baseline, anything that's new or whatever, which of course we can add, and then the weather is accounted for also.
Yeah, because I would think a lot of those windows were pretty old. So, it's probably a pretty good improvement. Another thing I was wondering, the numbers you gave are division-wide. When you look at it, school to school, is it pretty consistent what you're seeing in reductions or are there some?
Well, I think probably the best part about the software is that it goes down to the meter to the school. So, Hampton High School has six electric meters. And what we can do is actually trace the meter and see what the performance of each meter is and based on what it's attached to, you know, what is being used exactly when? Well, not pretty close to exactly. And what we're able to do is look at each school. And each school's a little bit different, the building is used differently. So, it isn't like a straight 10% across the board, it's more of a percentage, you know, one might be at 30%, one might be at 10% for a 20 average, things like that. So, it's not, every school is unique. The equipment it has is unique and our ability to run that equipment efficiently is unique. So, it's not just a straight 10% across the board, it's an average of all the schools.
Okay, that makes sense. Are they all pretty much trending down though?
Yeah, they are, a large majority of them are. There are some issues that we found and things that have been issues in the past that the software has allowed us to identify where we see, well, there's a certain spike going on here or what happened in the past that led to this number being the way it is. And we've been able to go back and make some adjustments and upgrade some things to try and head that off for the next year.
Great, thank you so much.
Mr. Harper?
Yes, good report. You mentioned a number associated with Phoebus, savings of 20, so many kilowatt hours, or is it kilowatts per hour?
Yeah, it's 77,000 kilowatt hours.
How does that equate to money?
I think it's what, 10 cent per kilowatt hour?
So, about 7,000, it's like shutting off an entire elementary school for a month.
For a month?
Yeah. That's generally, the elementary schools run around that much energy use for their month. So, you know, by making some changes at Phoebus, we were able to shave that number off of their electric bill.
Thank you.
Dr. Hellman?
Madam Chair, I just would like to take the opportunity, Mr. Tom Sawyer is with us tonight and of course, he's been an integral part of this entire process along with Matt Corwin, who is a vice president with Synergistics. I didn't have the opportunity to introduce him before he came up and answered the question, but it's just a true partnership like nothing I've ever seen before. And so, I wanted to make sure that they were introduced as well.
Thank you, Dr. Hellman. Would you all see, and we can't see over this board.
And from the Synergistic side, we are very pleased with the association with Hampton City Schools and the two gentlemen I have a pleasure of working with. You all made the right choice, for sure.
Great, great. Thank you. Well, it's exciting to hear the news that you've shared with us tonight because I think as a school board, we heard the pitch from Synergistics and it all sounded wonderful, but you know, there's always this hesitation, was it the right decision? But I think you've given us great evidence to have confidence in the decision we made to go in that direction. So, we look forward to your next report.
Well, we're excited about it and we're thankful for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you all. Dr. Shiflett?
Finally, we have our last report for the evening and it's our business operations and financial update by Dr. Hellman.
It's my pleasure at this point in time to give you a brief recap of the statement of revenues, expenditures and encumbrances for the period ending September 30th, 2013. Revenues received to date total $27,675,123 or approximately 14% of the budgeted revenue. Expenditures and encumbrances to date total $32,301,925 or approximately 16.4% of our budget. You might say, "Hey, we haven't taken in enough revenue to cover our expenditures." Well, the difference is the fact that we have about $4.7 million in encumbrances and the way the city funds the cash, once the encumbrances are liquidated or the goods have been received and paid for, the city then floats the cash over to us. So, everything is well, we're on target for where we're looking to be at the end of the year. You'll recall that we built the budget on 20,150 students. The fall membership has come in and we had 20,347 students in our fall membership. We have a lot of historical data that relates fall membership to March ADM and right now, we're projecting a March 2014 average daily membership of 20,113 or 37 students under the budgeted 20,150. So, as far as this year goes, we're looking pretty good right now. And I'd be more than happy to entertain any questions that any board member may have.
Thank you, Dr. Hellman. Any questions from board members? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Dr. Shiflett?
That concludes our report.
We move on to the hearing of any delegations or presentation of any written communications or petitions. Ms. Bowers, would you please share the protocol with our audience?
Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forms are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk. Each individual will have five minutes to speak. All comments shall be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school- Speakers should address the school board with decorum on policy issues and refrain from personal attacks. Speakers shall not address matters involving individual employees or students, as these topics may violate confidentiality and are not appropriate in a public forum. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Our first speaker tonight is Mr. Dave Dietrich.
Good evening, Mrs. Mugler.
Good evening.
Members of the board, Dr. Shiflett, my name is David Dietrich, 139 Wilderness Road. Just a few comments on some of the presentations earlier. I thought it was very good to see the Language Arts, Arts presentation, looking at things other than just testing results. Critical thinking is one of the key, should be one of the key drivers of education and bettering our society. Regarding the Community Priorities Workshop, one concern I have with that is, it doesn't seem to me that choices are really given to the community participants. It seems like all the options are provided by the superintendent, and it's, so I think it's really just a Hobson's Choice when it comes to decisions being made. Moving on to what I consider an ongoing shortfall in our school system, and that's the defenseless zones that we have around all our schools. Our schoolchildren are still running around with virtually no protection, and we still have most of our schools with no armed, permanent armed resource officers. So what do you say to parents of children in such unprotected schools? Mrs. Mugler, you said you're happy with our lack of school security. How many shots do you think a gunman can take before a security force arrives? And Virginia Code addresses firearms on school property. Why have you not taken this case? If you don't think you can improve our security, why haven't you taken this case to the legislature enrichment? Don't you think it's in the best interest of our children and our entire community? There are other school systems now that are moving forward on arming their teachers and staff. I think we ought to seriously look at that. In any case, we can't have enough armed resources, we can't afford them, for one thing, resource officers. On to community engagement. Mrs. Mugler, it's been eight months now since you've established your school board blue-ribbon panel. I'd like to know when you're going to produce your findings for members of the community, and the actions you're taking to improve the school system. When will you be issuing recommendations for those improvements? What's your timeline for corrective action? You still haven't held any public hearings on this matter, and I'm talking about discussing real solutions with real people. Moving on to Common Core State Standards. Last meeting, Mrs. Mugler, you stated Virginia doesn't use Common Core State Standards, or even the school system. While technically that may be true, in reality, there's little difference between standards of learning in Virginia and the Common Core State Standards. Virginia has de facto adopted the Common Core State Standards. According to the Virginia Department of Education, the 2010 English SOL and 2009 Mathematical SOLs align with the Common Core State Standards. Virginia's college and career-ready performance expectations also are aligned to the Common Core and international standards. Virginia Department of Education and the Board of Education are incorporating content from the Common Core State Standards into the standards of learning. According to the Virginia Pilot, the standards of learning form the foundation of curriculum across Virginia and are in line with the Common Core. Virginia's approach satisfies Common Core objectives while still retaining a system familiar to teachers and students. According to the School Improvement Network, even when states aren't using the Common Core Standards, they still find themselves, well, using the Common Core Standards. It's an appropriate move, Virginia was part of the committee to create the Common Core State Standards Initiative. And even in certain textbooks, you can see where the problems lie. In the book U.S. History: Preparing for the Advanced Placement Examination, they incorrectly summarize the Bill of Rights. And now, just recently, it's come to light, the book World History being used by Florida schools thinks it's appropriate to spend an entire chapter on teaching Islam and the fundamentals, foundations of that religion, and yet, nothing on Christianity or Judaism, which is really what our society is based on. I think, looking at all of this, preparing our children to pass tests, even in light of what I said earlier, doesn't prepare them for life. We've got to get beyond the federal dollars that come with the Common Core State Standards, and come up with our own standards to really get our children moving and get them to succeed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dietrich. Our next speaker is Winter Hobson. Darryl Winder.
Hello, thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Brian Hobson. Mr. Sean Brown? I'm sorry. Ms. Sean, I'm sorry. Joyce Hobson?
Hi.
Mr. Rudy Langford?
Hi.
She also present.
And our final speaker signed up tonight is Terrence Moore.
She also present.
Thank you very much. That concludes our speakers for this evening. Madam Clerk, did you have anything further, any other? No, ma'am. Thank you. We move on to other items for action, beginning with item 7.01. We have items 7.01 through, 7.0... 12. Thank you, 012. 7.12, 7.01 through 7.12, which are all related to policy. Madam Chair, I move approval of item 7.01 to 7.12.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Phillips and seconded by Mrs. Smith, that we approve items 7.01 through 7.12. Is there any discussion? If not, I'll just go through what each of those items is for our viewing audience, beginning with item 701, is the revision of school board policy GCG, Certified Employees' Probation and Contractual Status. Item 7.02, the revision of school board policy GCN, Performance Evaluation. Item 7.03, revision of school board policy GBM, Instructional Personnel Grievances. Item 7.04 is revision of school board policy GDH, Support Personnel Grievance Procedures. Item 705 is the revision of school board policy GCPD, Dismissal of Personnel. Item 706 is new school board policy GCPF, having to do with the suspension of employees. Item 7.07 is the revision of school board policy GCPA, Reduction in Workforce. Item 7.08 is the revision of school board policies GCI, Staff Assignments and Transfers, and GCI-R, which is Voluntary Transfers and Reassignment. Item 7.09 is the revision of school board policies GBC, Evaluation of Superintendent, and GBG-R, Evaluation of Superintendent Evaluation System. Item 7.10 is the revision of school board policies GCB, Instructional Staff Contracts, and GCB-R, Teacher Contract Schedules. Item 7.11 is the deletion of school board policy GBP, Certificated Employees' Contract Status. And item 7.12 is the revision of school board policy GCBB, Athletic and Extracurricular Supplements. There being no further discussion, Ms. Bowers, would you call for the vote? Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler? Aye, motion carries. We move on to item 7.13, Personnel Grievance 2013-04. Is there a motion? Madam Chair, I move to uphold the superintendent's recommendation on Personnel Grievance 2013-04.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Phillips and seconded by Mrs. Henry, that we uphold the superintendent's recommendation for Personnel Grievance 2013-04. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call for the vote? Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler? Aye, motion carries. Item 7.14 is Personnel Grievance 2013-05. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to uphold the superintendent's recommendation, Personnel Grievance 2013-05.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Mrs. Henry, that we uphold Personnel Grievance Is there any discussion? Ms. Bowers, will you call for the vote? Mr. Harper?
No.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Nay.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler? Abstain. Motion carries. Moving on to deliberation, and item 8.01 is a recommendation that Dr. Victor Hellman serve as a member-designee for Hampton City Schools on the Hampton Employees Retirement System Board. Madam Chairman, I move approval of that appointment. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm losing my mind. Three meetings in a row, Madam Chairman, too many for my mind. We could move it to...
We had to, with the retirement of Ms. Anne Stevens Cherry, we had to appoint another member to serve in her former capacity on the hers board.
And he didn't have anything else to do.
That's right.
So we thought you could do it.
Is there any, are there any questions or any discussion from board members on this item? And I don't think there's anything preventing us from moving the item forward to action if we so desire.
Is it needed in terms of timing, Dr. Hellman?
Next week, it's the first part of December.
Okay, so we can do it next week?
Yeah.
Okay, very well. Item 8.02 is the Resolution Concerning High-Stakes Standardized Tests of Virginia Public School Students. Dr. Shiflett, would you like to speak to that resolution?
I would. I know that many of you have been seeing some information passing through your emails about school divisions that are adopting the Virginia Association of School Superintendent's Resolution concerning the SOL testing issue. The resolution was sent to you earlier in an email, so that you could have a chance to read through it. Basically, it's really looking at the numbers of SOL tests that are given, about 34 tests that are given, and asking that the state board look at the reasonableness of the Virginia testing program, and to determine whether there are other options available for us to assess the performance of students, rather than a battery of tests. Although you've heard tonight about, you know, the technology-enhanced items, and how our students are improving their performance in these areas, and, you know, I don't want it to be misconstrued, that at any point, we think that it's okay not to have rigor and not to achieve for high standards. We just really believe that the over-reliance on testing as the one indicator of the successful performance of a school division, that there is too much over-reliance on that. We do welcome the changes in the SOL testing, because we do believe that we are going to be able to see greater instructional performance by our young people. But we would like to have the state board examine the amount of testing that's being done, and the format in which the testing is being done, and the fact that it does become the sole determiner for both the state and the federal accountability systems as to the success of a school division. And I also think it's time, it's not in the resolution yet, but I really think it's time that the state board recognize that all schools are not equal in terms of the challenges that they have to overcome. Admittedly, there are school divisions that have greater barriers to success because of issues of poverty and things of that nature.
Thank you. Dr. Shiflett, are there questions, any comments or questions from board members on this? Mrs. Henry?
I think we want to be sure that people understand that Hampton City Schools was a leader in supporting accountability for student performance. One of the first state accountability measures was the literacy passport for middle-school students. And the State Department of Education and the superintendent who initiated that test wiggled out of it when it came to crunch time and said, oh, well, we're really not going to have this count when it was time to implement the test. And Hampton stood up among a few divisions in the state that said, no, we are going to implement those criteria, and if the students don't meet the literacy passport, we're not going to promote them. We're going to help them do better, and so they're ready to move on. So we have a belief in accountability and in helping our students meet high standards. But there are a number of concerns about the SOLs. One is the manpower it takes, the teacher time it takes, the money it takes, the test companies are getting rich, and we are not. And the variability with this issue, when the state can tinker with the requirements of the test, and then use those results to grade schools and give them a means, the last legislature tried to have a means where the student, the school got a poor grade, the state could take over that school and the money that our community is contributing to that school, and have the control of the school and our funds. So I think there are so many issues tied with SOL testing that the state board really needs to address, and that's why the Virginia Association of School Superintendents has taken a stand on this. And I think, as parents, as teachers, as school employees who are spending a zillion man-hours dealing with testing, this is overkill. This is not accountability, this is beating us to death with the same stick. And we're, we need to have other measures, and our community has other expectations for what our students can do in terms of life skills, in terms of career readiness, that are not measured on an SOL test. So I'm kind of glad that throughout the state, this resolution is being considered.
Thank you, Ms. Henry.
I just wanted to say that the VSBA, the superintendent from Salem County, came to our meeting where we were putting together things that we're going to legislate for, and that was one of the things. And I had no idea until that point, how many tests, SOLs, they had to take. So I'm glad that they're getting, just going around the state, because it'll put more manpower behind it.
Any other comments or questions from board members on the resolution? So we'll take that up for action at our next meeting. Items 8.03 through 8.06 are policy revisions. Beginning with 803 is the revision of school board policy GB, General Human Resources Policies. Is there any further deliberation? We had this policy presented to us at our previous meeting in October. There being none, I'll move on to item 8.04, the revision of school board policy GBL, Personnel Records. Any questions, comments, or further deliberation from board members? And then we move to Item 8.05, the Revision of School Board Policy GBK Tobacco-Free School for Staff. Yes, sir. Mr. Kilgore?
It's actually, since it's on, a comment on this one and the last one, JFCG, but I wanted to ask the school board attorney to look at the last legal reference made. It was 15.2-2827. I'm not sure that that legal code still applies to our policy anymore because it talks about designated smoking areas and things like that. And since we are smoke-free completely, I'm not sure that that particular legal code still needs to be referenced. So if you could just check that, I would appreciate it.
Will do. If it's not applicable, we will delete.
Okay. Thank you.
And in hand with that, 8.06, which is Revision of School Board Policy JFCG Tobacco-Free School for Students. Mr. Kilgore just commented on that particular policy.
Same legal reference.
Any other comments or deliberation? These items were mostly up for revision to add. Is it e-cigarettes?
Correct.
If there's nothing further on these policies, we'll move along to our deliberation first read. And we begin with Item 9.01, which is the Revision of School Board Policy BDD Electronic Participation in Meetings from Remote Locations. And...
This is part of some recent updates from VSBA. So we, we're recommending that the entire, the most important changes are complete new Section 2, when a quorum is not physically assembled, what the code provisions, so that if there is some kind of really catastrophic event here, how you all can convene a meeting. And that was recommended directly out of the code to be added so that you can pull up the policy and understand what we need to do. The others is simply to add whether or not it's an emergency or a personnel matter in Item Number 1.
Any questions for Ms. Reeves on Policy BDD? If not, we'll move along to Revision of School Board Policy AC Nondiscrimination. Ms. Reeves?
This was very little with respect to actual language change, but it was key to change the citations to not only the Virginia Code, but the US, United States Code. Many of those provisions needed to be updated.
Any questions for Ms. Reeves on this policy? We move on to Item 9.03, which is the Revision of School Board Policy BBFA Conflict of Interest.
This is quite a change for you all to undertake. VSBA recommends that with respect to all of the provisions of conflict of interest for board governance, that we basically put in a long, long policy with respect to all of the items that would constitute a conflict of interest. As you can see, you had a single paragraph. And we are now growing to a 10-page VSBA recommended policy. I actually had seen it in the past. It had not grown quite this long, and we were trying to hold it to its minimalist paragraph. But I think at this point, it does make sense for you to understand and it to be available to all to see what would constitute a conflict of interest.
Any questions for clarification for Ms. Reeves on this one? And 9.04, Revision of School Board Policy GBACB Conflict of Interest.
Simply in the Human Resources Section, these are mirror policies.
Item 905 is Revision of School Board Policy IGCA Remedial and Summer Instruction Program. Dr. Johnson?
The main purpose for the revision to this particular policy is to update it with the new 2013 Standards of Quality requirement for targeted mathematics intervention for students in grades 6 through 8, so that as secondary schools, our middle schools in particular, working with the mathematics department, will provide the remediation as outlined in the new standards.
Questions for Dr. Johnson on this item? Okay, we move on to Item 9.06, which is the Revision of School Board Policy JBAA Section 504 Nondiscrimination Policy and Grievance Procedures. Dr. Johnson?
Yes, we have several policies related to nondiscrimination, and the intent here was to ensure that they were all aligned to match in timeline and to use one document that can be covering multiple policies in the event that someone wanted to make a complaint in writing, so that we would just have one consistent form.
So, Madam Chair, particularly if you look on Page 2, what Dr. Johnson is talking about is instead of using a separate form for a 504 complaint with regard to a student 504 complaint, now a parent or, a parent can go to our website and pull up, we'll be able to, now there's two separate forms, and they've got to figure out which form they need to use. Now we're going to have one form. The goal is to have the one form they can use for both, and it will get the crux of all the information we need to begin an investigation, so that they don't have to figure out which forms they need to use. There's one form, whether or not it's a bullying, harassment, a 504 claim, or some other kind of sexual harassment claim. They only have to use one form.
Additionally, we made sure that our, all of our nondiscrimination policies are cross-reference to each other.
Any questions for Dr. Johnson on this policy? Okay. We move on to Item 9.07, which is School Board Policy BF Board Policy Manual. Ms. Reeves?
This is a new policy that is recommended by VSBA. It is actually, it's your option whether or not you wish to have one, but you obviously have a board policy manual, but you've never had a policy that says you have a board policy manual. So they recommend that you have this and that, you know, and so that citizens know that it's there and how it's derived. So it's new.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Reeves on Board Policy Manual? Item 9.08 is Revision of School Board Policy BFB Policy Development, Evaluation, Approval, and Dissemination. Ms. Reeves?
This is again reflective of some revisions that were made in the most recent VSBA update of Board Governance and Operations, that section of your policy manual. And you were fairly well updated on this one. We just changed some language so that it was actually reflective of what the actual practice is in Hampton City Schools. We also updated it with respect to VSBA recommended that we put a particular case name in it and take out the Standards of Quality for Public Schools in Virginia as a legal citation.
Questions for Ms. Reeves? Okay. Rounding out, our deliberation first read is Item 9.09, which is Revision of School Board Policy CF School Building Administration.
And this is simply, the language in legal citations needed to be updated. And while we were doing that, when we took it through Policy Review Committee, it was recommended that we take out this last paragraph. In some cases, it was redundant, and in another way, it wasn't even necessary here because of the nature of the policy. It was about school building administration and not necessarily the evaluation of principles, and that's now in a different section anyway. So it was recommended as we took it through committee that we take that out.
Any questions for Ms. Reeves on the School Building Administration Policy Revision? There being none, we'll move on to informational items. Our first item on information is 10.01, the Organizational Chart. Dr. Shiflett?
This is the organizational chart for the current year of 2013-14. You'll notice that we've added Ms. Gallata to it and made a couple of other changes to personnel changes on the chart. So this is for your information. It will be posted on our website.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Any questions from board members on that? Our next meeting will be held on next Wednesday, November 13th, at 6:30 PM. That will be held here at Jones Magnet Middle School. It will be a work session. And so that's a slight deviation from our regular schedule. We normally meet on the third Wednesday of the month, but we will be at the Virginia School Board Association Conference on that date, so we moved our meeting date up. Take care of all those things. And that's all I have with regard to our next meeting. We move on to informational items. Dr. Shiflett?
Thank you. I'm going to call on Ms. Reeves first. She has an announcement that she'd like to make about a program that she'll be doing over at Hampton High School.
Oh, yes. Next Saturday, with the help of our school board liaison, Ms. Bolton and my Greater Peninsula Women's Bar and the National Association of Women's Judges have encouraged us, and this is probably the fourth or fifth annual Color of Justice Program, and we put on this program from 9:00 to noon at Hampton High School in the Media Center. And the point is, it's almost a career pathways program that allows those students who may be interested in a career in law to listen to, first, a panel of sitting judges and learn how they made their way to the bench and what different paths they took. And then it will be a panel of practicing attorneys who will also talk about the different ways that they came to the bar and what different areas they practice in. And then for the last hour, there will be attorneys there to sit at each table with the participants and answer any questions they have about what kind of undergraduate education they might wish, they might want to take so that they would be prepared to go to law school, or whether it's necessary to take certain pre-law or not. And then if they're interested in a particular area of the law, they may want to sit at a table with, I don't know, bankruptcy lawyer as opposed to someone who's just doing juvenile. So we're going to have a number of attorneys from the Greater Peninsula Women's Bar who are going to participate and help the students understand, you know, how much fun it is to do what we do in the varying, and the varying careers you can have in the law, all the way from, there will be someone from legal aid all the way to prosecutor. So it's a lot of fun. And thank you for helping.
Is Judge Judy going to be there?
Judge Judy Klein from the Juvenile Bench in Newport News will be there.
And I have had the opportunity to go to a portion of this event, and it is, it's really quite a wonderfully done event, and the young people get so much out of it. On December 4th, I have invited my Superintendent's Advisory Board to come to our school board meeting so that you'll get an opportunity to meet all of them. And Jeray is also a member of that board. I think it's the Jeray Night. Because I also wanted to say the latest school notes is out and available, and it was hosted by, not Paul Rowe, who's our usual host, but by our student liaison, Jeray Bolton. And she really did quite a fine job. So please take an opportunity to look at that programming. The entire program is so well-done, but then having one of our students host it was just really something special. Also, our HCS email extra has just come out, and if you're not already receiving it, go to our webpage on the banner on the left-hand side, the very first item. If you click on that, you can sign up, and then you'll automatically be getting all of our email extras with all kinds of great information about Hampton City Schools. Tomorrow, I'll be going over to the Crown Plaza to do an event called Hampton 101, and Ann Bain and I will be talking to and interacting with both Realtors and Hampton citizens. And it's always just a wonderful event to get to talk to people about Hampton City Schools and to, you know, have some interaction with people in our community and to help our Realtors understand why we're all sold on Hampton. And finally, this is, words of sympathy and support go out to Gerald Scott and her family on her recent loss, and we're all thinking about you and praying for you and your family.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Informational items from other board members? I think you covered it all for us, Dr. Shiflett, quite well. If there's nothing further to come before the board, this meeting is adjourned.